I didn't see it. Uh, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Close same sign. And it's approved. Now we'll go to general public concern.
Should we have been able to flip the thing down to the door lock?
Uh...
Yeah, because our public hearing is at eight thirty, and it is eight thirty.
It shouldn't be past eight thirty. We don't want anybody to-
All I worry about somebody going in somewhere else in the courthouse, being no one else is in here, so... Alright, it's eight thirty. It's time for the discussion on the approval of application of a construction permit for Summit Port Three, LLP, and Waukesha Township, Section Four. Um, this is a public hearing.
That's something.
So do we need to make a motion?
Do you have any information on that? Because the reason- a lot of the reason we're here today is because of you.
I'll make a motion to go into-
Yeah, please.
I'll make a motion to go into the public hearing.
Alright.
I'll second the question.
We have a motion in a second to go into a public hearing, and we'll do that at eight thirty-three. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. What's the hearing? Now we're official, so you can-
So now you can answer our question if this is a public hearing, so...
This is a public hearing, and of course, I think you're all aware, Randy's out.
Yep, we are.
So whether we'll get to the completion of the matrix scoring and resolution vote, um, probably not today. So, uh, I've talked to DNR, I think Randy's talked to them, um, but I think our intentions or understanding is, uh, I'm not sure if the deadline was tomorrow for your response, but they're gonna extend that until a week from tomorrow.
Randy can be-
So anyway, we've got time to go through this. Uh, this is a copy of the actual permit that we would submit to the county and the DNR. Now, I don't know if any or all of you have seen this. Uh, you're welcome to come through it, ask me any questions you'd like to ask about it. I will introduce Mitch Paul. He's the business development department for him, so he would have been working with the landowners as far as the purchase of the land and arranging easements for the manure applications out of the site. Uh, but what the site is just, if you'd like me to just kinda go through the, the big picture as far as it's a thousand head site, it would be two fitted barns. Uh, dimensionally, they're seventy-one feet wide by two hundred and, uh, I think three feet long. Um, they sit in the, um... Yeah, two hundred and seventy-one feet. Uh, sits in the northwest of the northwest quarter of Section Four in the House of Township.
That's actually Waukesha.
Section Four? Yeah. So it would be sitting out west of Odison, about a mile. Uh, just about due west of the northwest corner of Odison, about a mile. Uh, so anyway, that is- So that-
I'm sorry.
The land works.
The landlord, yeah.
So, that's the, uh, the building detail, I guess, uh, four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine pigs and two buildings, uh, deep bit barns of the root over. Uh, we're here today to discuss the master matrix. Uh, and I'll step back just a minute. This site is budgeted to produce a little over a million two hundred thousand gallons of manure, uh-
On a yearly basis?
On a yearly basis. Uh, right now, we have land in the plan to support a million five hundred thousand gallons, and that's all gonna be on manure property. Um, so the, uh, the fields themselves all store in the very best category on the Iowa phosphorus risk index, and that's a, that's a modeling process we're required to do on the manure plan, and it models, uh, the potential for phosphorus loss in Iowa's waters. Uh, large majority, eighty, ninety percent of phosphorus loss in Iowa's waters is a result of soil erosion. So, if you think about that neighborhood, uh, we're looking for a flat ground a long ways away from water with minimal soil erosion. So, if you think about that, that sort of ground, that scores the best. We get into western Iowa, southern Iowa, you got a lot of slope, you got a lot of creeks, uh, in those fields that'll score near as well. So, so anyway, uh, question-
Is any of this land that's in the manure matrix plan in another manure matrix plan?
Uh, not that I am aware of, and that, uh, we have ran across that where the evidence-
And I don't think that's acceptable. I think it can only be- land can only be in one plan.
Land can be in multiple-
Because we've seen it before.
Yes, land can be in multiple plans, but we have a requirement that makes sure that there's enough land in all of the plans for all of those sites. So even if it's in both plans, there must be enough acres to cover, to utilize all that manure when you combine the plans. But in this case, is this one site or this one?
Just approximately between you two gentlemen, you probably know about how many acres the million plus gallons a year covers?
Yeah, about three hundred. Uh, just take a four or five thousand gallon acre application rate, uh, divided by a million two hundred thousand gallons will be about three hundred, three hundred thousand gallons, sorry, three hundred acres.
So about three hundred, and how many do you have?
Uh, right now, we've got, um-
We should just say contracts with, I don't know if-
So we're, we're at two hundred ninety-three point five acres.
Are you anticipating getting more acres?
Yeah, the, the plans are what I call a living document, so, uh, those plans can change as early as tomorrow. They have more acres. A lot of times, they'll change every fall, uh, right before the new application, they'll apply additional fields, depending on what rotations they're gonna use. Uh, this is the right corn on corn rotation, uh, so, uh, they're, they're gonna probably be building soil P and K fertility. Uh, we're limited to only apply as much nitrogen as what the crops can use, uh, so that part of it's... We've got a model that, that is very low risk for phosphorus loss, and then the second criteria is we can't apply the nitrogen and let that corn-
Nitrogen usage, but corn obviously allows you to supply-
So they don't need nitrogen every year. Next year, when it goes to soybean, or if it goes soybean, then you go to corn soybean rotation. Uh, most, generally, you don't apply nitrogen ahead of soybeans, uh, in very rare instances, we do see that. Uh, but so then these, these fields would be still in the plan, uh, but we'd have an entirely different set of acres to utilize those manures this second year.
To answer your question specific to this, this farm, um, we sign long-term manure easements, uh, with the landowner, so those easements are long-term in the plan, and that's what our lender requires, and we internally require in order to build the site. So we have facility manure easements that will accommodate all the manure on an annual basis out of this, out of this plant. And then at that farmer, we prefer that those, uh, that manure be taken to a, a different farm that was in that long-term, uh, easement plan, that would work with that on an annual basis.
Well, this is, uh, kind of, uh-
DNR.
Yeah, all of this-
I don't know if this is gonna be an organic farm, and they gotta have a three-year rotation. That ain't gonna work.
Yeah, they can add, they, we do three-year rotations, that's fine. Uh, they'll add fields to that.
Who tells you, or who, who, how do you find out who's getting the-
Those extra manure. Those farmers tell us what fields they want in that plan every year, so what, and again, I introduce myself, I'm Ken thousand clinical, and we're a small consulting firm that, that helps farmers with the paperwork, even in some clients with DNR. And, uh, DNR, uh, makes us keep records for five years, and typically, we're audited within that five years documenting all those records to make sure it's, it's, uh, right with. But every year, uh, we'll go in and take a manure analysis out of that, out of that facility pre-pump, so we know under, to the best of our ability, what's in there for the analysis from a nitrogen, phosphorus, and potash perspective. And then the farmers will also then tell us, hey, we've added acres or this different rotations, we're gonna want these manures put somewhere else. If those fields aren't in the plan, we do that same, uh, Iowa phosphorus risk index evaluation. Uh, we have to have current soil samples in the field before manure can be applied, uh, but then we add those fields to the plan, uh, and then those manures are put on those fields, uh, those particular years. Um, and again, we, you could have a five-year rotation if you wanted. What we see, uh, Iowa liquid slime manures, uh, typically, uh, and every other year, we're like a corn soybean rotation, almost perfectly matches crop removal levels for phosphorus and potash. So, um, when we're working on corn on corn rotations, you're typically trying to build that analysis up on those fields to, to get it to an optimum rate or a rate that they think is optimum. Uh, when you see a corn soybean rotation, uh, you're gonna be almost perfectly matched with the crop, crop removal rate. Uh, so then when you start to go to a three-year, four-year, or five-year rotation, uh, they're gonna end up needing to supplement those acres, uh, again, with commercial fertilizer, now again, not on an organic basis, but, uh, but again, about an every other year rotation will, will keep those fields at a crop removal rate about that, that static, uh, optimum fertility rate.
Well, that's all I'm finding, which I totally understand all that, but you're right at the minimum.
Yeah.
Now, I don't wanna say that, uh, nothing against the folks that are, have the, you know, long-term ever forever thing, better easements than no easements. I hate to say that people hold manure, but maybe, oh, is there a possibility why there isn't other acres? Because, you know, and I'm not, I don't work at you guys, you know, fellow jobs, but, uh, I've had enough experience, maybe we all lie out to a degree, that one of those places heights are full, more than enough acres. For contingency when, uh, crop rotation changes and the three-year rotation and all that. Is there a reason why there isn't more acres?
Do this like, yeah, so the, and Josh Van, uh, he's working with, uh, young farmer, uh, so we guarantee the gallons of manure to the ranchers and the easements.
Right.
So he's, he's guaranteeing with the acres a hundred percent of the manure.
Right.
In that section, there are a few farms that he farms, family lands that aren't in the long-term, uh, easement acres. What's in the plan is the long-term easement acres that are required for the DNR's permit, uh, to be issued. And then these farms, other farms in that area, that likely will be, uh, uh, in the plan long-term. But at the time of, when we were initially, uh, met with him, and he was able to personally, uh, bring it to the site, guaranteed in the manure plant, those are the acres that are here today. Uh, so that is enough acres for us to meet the requirements, and then he has other acres that he has a facility to reply to.
Well, I mean, nothing against these farmers, I mean, they're doing this for- I'm not sure, sure, I'll throw the, I hate to say it, but not, you guys seem like really pleasant guys, thrilled with the, the companies and such, uh, they're after the manure. This is also not their home deal, it's the manure deal.
It's an opportunity to talk to Josh again as early as this morning on what part of the operation he'd be interested in, uh, inserting, whether it's to take the care, the lawn, the smell removal, things, uh, certainly. Um, folks that do business with us want the site to look a certain way and represent their operations all their own, and so he may choose to do more of that other than what's the, uh, subject here. But what land costs today and, and what facility costs, right, and what individual, if Josh's aides wants to invest in for the long-term, he can keep this, uh, in their family's best interest to work with us. I don't need them benefiting for them and from the manure, and ultimately, the, the farmer's decisions. That all kinda rounds up for what, how it's gonna affect him or and us making a decision on the manure.
You're spreading that on right next to the city limits of Odison?
Yeah, there's, uh, it's right there at the city limits, so there's certain guardrails blocking, uh, in that section, and so the, the farm is joining the, the site, and then there's acres in the market.
Have you notified all, all the citizens in Odison, plus the ones that live around it in that section?
Does, um, the county, that's exactly, he has a letter here that he receives to get those that were, that have identified more people, what, uh, the requirements are for notifications, I feel those that have an interest, have that number.
Have you checked- Have you checked about the leaching, or if it's that close to Odison water supply, have you checked about the leaching that could possibly go into the water supply of Odison?
Yeah, I'll let him take-
Yeah, I, um, the, the sighting work, the preliminary sighting work that we do, uh, DNR one requires us to verify that we're not in an area floodplain. Uh, there's, there's DNR floodplain, and then there's also FEMA floodplain, and we weren't in either one of those situations. The second thing we're required to do is look for tar strain, and, uh, and we're also required to look for, uh, ag drainage wells and sinkholes. And so, uh, and those you have, have had in the county, I think they've all been flooded.
No, they haven't, but I believe it's safe to say that the location where this whole site is, there, that is not a concern.
So, from that perspective, uh, uh, most are probably at the biggest risk to say, like municipal waters or municipal waters, uh, from, uh, uh, and then from there, we have manure application setbacks, and we have sighting setbacks from the site itself. Now, a deep well, uh, would only require to be a hundred feet away from, uh, a private well, and, uh, and then I think that, and I don't have that distance with me, but I think it's the same distance on if it were a municipal well. But, um, so yeah, we've done, uh, required sighting from a neutral application, uh, acres under a manure plan will be the only acres monitored for nutrient application around that municipal well, wherever it is placed. It was, it's outside the mile, so, um, we're, we haven't scanned for wells outside the mile, but, uh, so far outside of our, our, uh, our radius of what we examine that, uh... But back to wherever that well is located, uh, the acres under, under this manure plan will be the best managed acres in that community. Your commercial fertilizers today are still totally unregulated. So, and nitrogen can be applied to whatever rate that you, you can afford to apply it, where again, these nitrogens are, are applied to what, uh, function rates are, and then in turn, uh, that are applied to them. So, yeah, I, I think the municipal wells should be protected, if not better protected than, than what it has to use in commercial fertilizers.
This manure would be incorporated?
This manure, uh, both in the master matrix and in the manure plan, uh, we've documented that we're gonna incorporate it. The master matrix is, we go through this, and I, I don't wanna take more time than you've been, uh, you're gonna allow, but, uh, there's a lifetime commitment to inject these manures. In Iowa, it's not, yeah, legal to apply it on top yet, uh, especially, you know, parts of Iowa that use a lot of pasture, go in and, and put, uh, a top dress across, uh, eight deals after they get done harvesting, cutting a gate. But, uh, here in what I call rural top country, uh, a couple of things going on. One, injecting the manure greatly reduces odors. And secondly, it greatly reduces volatilization losses to the nitrogen, uh, to the atmosphere. So again, uh, as we go through the master matrix, and this master matrix scores, we go through it, uh, it's probably in the best ten percent scoring master matrices that we've ever scored. We've done a lot of them, uh, but, uh, back to, we've got a lot of extra points in our scoring, uh, so that injection matrix, uh, was really dictated by Summit that that was something they wanted committed to, uh, that that was manure, so it'll always be injected, and it's documented through the master matrix scoring, and hopefully, then ultimately, your approvals.
If the board doesn't mind, you might just go through that master matrix score, and, and with, at the end, you'll understand the, uh, minimum requirements, and then what we actually score beyond the minimum requirement.
And so, in your package, uh, you would have gotten, uh, a couple of overview maps like this, and it'll have the distances on there, showing the details that we use through the scoring. And you're welcome to take-
I think we have that. We don't have any of that.
Well, and maybe Randy's got-
We probably, might be a target here.
Oh, you have this one, but that's not it.
You're long with, and I can pass the book along, your pages along, any of this, as we go through it, but... So, the master matrix, uh, is what I call an open book test, and, uh, what it does is it looks at the site in its, in its placement setting, and will achieve a score, and will look at that score, and will, and will know if that's, if that just pure placement has passed this test. And then beyond that, if it doesn't, are there some things that we can do within that site to make it more, uh, more acceptable within the community, within the water setting, within the air system out there? So, um, anyway, so we kinda start with placement maps that look like that. You guys are welcome to pass those around. Oh, you do, you did find it. Thank you. So we've done a forty-four question test. Uh, there's eight hundred and eighty possible points, and we need to achieve a four of forty, okay? And it looks up in that site's impact to the local air system, water system, and then within the community as a whole, okay? So on question number one, they ask us, what's our additional separation distance above the minimum from the closest residence, hospital, nursing home, and childcare? So, our closest neighbors in this situation are gonna be thirty-eight hundred ninety-five feet due south, which, again, from southern predominant summer wind directions, that, that's the direction they have in the winter time, which is generally out of the north, northwest. Uh, but both from the community of Odison and the closest neighbors, this, this sighting has, has good placement. Uh, for thirty-eight hundred ninety-five feet, requirement was eighteen seventy-five, we've got an extra two thousand and twenty feet, uh, which gives us a hundred points out of a hundred on, uh, in, uh, additional distance to those first, first protected areas. The second question asked us, how much additional is, distance is there from the minimum or from the required twenty-five hundred feet to a public use area? So that would be, uh, say, a county park with a, with an improvement, whether that be a shelter house or picnic benches, those sort of things, somewhere where the public stops and congregates. Uh, but also, then that would be your cemeteries. So, uh, we looked out, uh, we're at twenty-five hundred feet, we don't for sure, we looked out an additional fifteen hundred feet. There were, there were no public use areas, so we scored thirty out of thirty on question number two. Third question dealt with extra separation distances to schools, churches, and businesses. Again, uh, requirement was eighteen seventy-five, we looked out another fifteen hundred, and scored an extra thirty points of thirty on question number three. Uh, now we're starting to look at water. Question number four asks about additional separation distance to the minimum, uh, requirement of five hundred feet of water. So this would be, uh, like your dredge ditches, your creeks, and it actually includes anything with a cut channel that may be dry a hundred and sixty-five days a year that you can't drive a vehicle across. So, uh, farm field waterways that are grass, that you're farming through, wouldn't count as water, but if you get to a, a ravine or something with a cut, uh, that may be dry a hundred and sixty-four days a year, uh, we have to measure to that. Closest water in this instance was eighty-five hundred feet away. It's, it's due north there, not quite to-
Isn't that addition to the north side of that, hasn't that been excavated for water to run down? The addition down to Section Four on the north side.
Uh, the-
Do you wanna talk through the, the motivation anyway?
Yeah, you're, uh, you're, I mean, there's a couple of different things going on there. I mean, from the road ditch, or your-
Okay.
Uh, so the road ditches, again, I'm sure you're looking at drainage-
Exactly.
... Uh, they are gonna drain water probably, so intakes, drag or surface exits. Uh, the DNR does require us to measure through those road ditches, otherwise, you'd always be unable to get water from, from water. So, if it's, uh, it would have to be an extension of a creek or a dredge ditch that you're using that road ditch for.
I think so, it's on a regular road ditch farm field, uh, drains water to the road ditch, right in that direction.
Now, uh, tile intakes, unless they're directly into an ag drainage well, are not considered draining to the earth. Right, so, so anyway, as far as your tile intakes that are draining to a river, uh, there is some from that definition of water also. Uh, it's, um, it's surface water drainage connecting to, uh, uh, surface water, so, uh, as opposed to actual road ditching. So, unless you've got something significant-
Well, what they, what they've done is there's a big wetland there, and they overexcavated the road ditch to drain that water to the east, under the railroad tracks will- There's a- There's a box over, and, uh, basically, they captured a hill to keep some water.
And with my familiarity with the farm, and Ken and I, as DNR representative, as well as your county representative, we're on the site, uh, two weeks, week and a half, two weeks ago, Ken. So the DNR requires a site visit ahead of the county board meeting or the open forum, uh, and verifies that all of the distances and locations identified in our, uh, the clinicals process, um, were, uh, were accurate. So we drive the section with the DNR, DNR type with county representative, um, to confirm and, and verify that what's in the plan is accurate and something wasn't missed. So, I will try to make sure that, that, uh, that scenario isn't, uh, news over the last couple of weeks, but I doubt it, I doubt it is.
The whole thing is, is it's been dry. If you would have went out there a couple of years ago, that area looked like a lake.
Oh, yeah.
And it all drained under the railroad tracks and on down to the field.
Goes down, goes under the road, and it goes north.
Well, you had, you had a big issue with the farm there, that's why we were there, but we spent a lot of time out there looking at tiles, looking at road ditches, and all that water did travel east. This is a regular, over excavation.
Yeah, but it's been that way for years.
Yeah, and we had lots of discussion about agreements between landowners to keep this waterway clean so the water could flow, and so that's why we're pretty aware of the situation out there.
What's the distance to, well, something, consider this not, it's not even-
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet. So, I mean, and this was in the very northwest corner of that section?
Southwest corner of the northwest quarter. So, yeah.
You get the, where, oh, yeah, let me see that.
No, okay, okay, they're- So, I mean-
They push it as far away as they can.
Then it's five hundred feet from that.
Is all required.
Yeah, well, you're, it's certainly over five hundred feet.
Yeah.
So that, that was probably why- So that, that was probably why they were not there.
That's probably why they moved it there.
Yep.
We take in consideration, uh, private tile, private tile-
Yeah, we're talking, that concern is right up here.
High distance to rest, all those factors.
Well, that answers that question.
So there's the five hundred, um, as far as the small waters concerned, and then when we get, we'll go through this a little bit, they made us measure this mother, other waters also, but, uh, far back from private tile, yes? Um, well, there's no requirement on private tile, other than with the private landowners. It's county tiles, and we do map those ahead of time, uh, from a practicality perspective, we try to be fifty maybe off of county tiles, just for repair. And again, we don't want to go over the top of a county tile, but, uh, there were no county tiles in this area. Private tiles in the building site itself, if there are any, we're required to cap those or reroute those, and that'll be done through the excavation process. Okay.
That's a part of the area, that's a lot of distance too.
Okay, so the next questions, we took four, critical public areas, so that would be like Lincoln's first place, or, uh, there's a specific list of those in the DNR's department. There were none within three thousand feet, so we scored ten points on question number six. And then they require us to measure the major waters, so that would be like the Des Moines River, the Skunk River, the Iowa River, um, and again, our distance there is a thousand feet away. So again, what the separation distances are driven off of is, they want, they want to get us as far away from those waters, if something did go wrong, and there was a leak, and you were trying to dam or dike that, that the north side up, that you had time to get out in front of it. A small creek, I mean, it doesn't happen very often, but, but again, you'll see them dike up, and they'll actually pump the creek dry to clean up the spill. Once you get to the big river, that's downstream before anybody can do anything about it, so very seldom are you going to be able to dike up a big river, but that's the requirement for having more separation distance. Anyway, we looked out an additional thousand feet, there was none out there, and so they scored fifty points of fifty for being extra distance away from, from major water. There were no other confinements with manure plants in that neighborhood, within thirty-nine-hundred and sixty feet, and again, what they're looking at, there's concentration within that neighborhood. With that, they scored the twenty-five points of point five on question number ten, for no other confinement in that neighborhood that applied the plan, okay? High quality waters, so if you like your cold water trial streams, or again, your municipal, uh, if there's a municipal's protective water system out there, there were none within two thousand feet, and scored thirty of thirty on question number ten, okay? We mentioned it was pitted, root farms, they get thirty points for a custom manure covered, and they get thirty points for using cement storage. I think probably the last permits we worked on in this county were utilizing florey stores, so they also are considered foreign storage. And that was to give farmers incentive to quit using the urban basins and the weekends, which, in this part of the world, you generally have the water table too close to make those work anyway, but there was an incentive that they're going to pay, let's get away, let's get away from the urban structures. This site will be a truck turnaround, so the trucks will be coming up completely off the road, turning around onsite, whether it be for feed deliveries, or loading out, or delivering pigs, so there's twenty points available there. Summit Farms has had no administrative orders or violations with DNR on any of their facilities, so they get twenty, thirty points on question number twenty. Family, or by size, this falls into the smallest sizing category for confinement yet, so it's twenty points of maximum twenty on question number twenty-four. This site will utilize, and ask why tanks amendment, it's going to be a water saving device, so again, from a natural resource, an aquifer perspective, they've made the commitment that they're going to use either a wet/dry feeder, or a truck loader, or a hand loader, or even a swinging nipple, unless they're all, all devices that are keeping the pigs from wasting water, anybody that remembers, they can lay on the fence, and lay all summer long with their jaw on the nipple, and down their fella. Anyway, we save water, and you also get fifteen percentage reduction from the work on the account, so you get a more concentrated, again, just a lot less potential for spills or, and- I talked about the injection commitment earlier, there's thirty points, and they've committed to injecting or incorporating the manure on the same date that's applied, detail around that. It's not a twenty-four hour commitment, they're injecting or broadcasting manure at ten o'clock at night, they've got to have that injected and covered up by midnight, so it's got to be on that same date. And again, most of the equipment today is injected, point of, point of application, so-
So, with this, it's considered injection?
I'm sorry?
With this, but they commonly did always consider it injection.
Yeah, and actually, it's considered incorporation, yeah, and there's a, there's a fine detail around that, just on nitrogen loss, but, uh, but yeah, as far as from the setback, the resec, uh, setback perspective, injection incorporation, or just any setback distances. And then the other thing that they've committed to, that, again, whether it's thirty years or fifty years, but someday when the site is no longer used for pork production, there's a closure plan included with the permit, and it'll be a permanent record on the site, but that site's got to be taken down, manure, the burn pot empty, pissed clean out, and any requirements at the local state or federal, uh, got to be committed to as far as removing that site. So, again, that's, that's what they call a closure plan. But with that, they scored one hundred and ninety-five points of four forty, they had an extra fifty-five points, and with that, I guess, please illustrate that there are some things that they believe in, one, the injection, to the closure plan, to try to make these sites more than the minimum, and, um, and so again, that's their scoring, the site is scoring one hundred and ninety-five points.
Do you lay out the site order, start building?
Oh, no. Sorry. After the DNR's, uh, DNR issue, and those, and after that, will be when we officially receive the permit, that's, uh, we gave the most intent, and we're observing, they abstract, and we'll purchase the five and some odd acres from the Vanworks, and then we can initiate construction pathways, and we can issue a motion about, or, 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 or use that for construction.
That's the way it's supposed to go. And we cannot-
It's otherwise, that's why I asked.
We cannot, uh, we can, uh, we can build a site there, we can build a site, but we cannot initiate any, uh, or-
I drove up around there Saturday, and there's nothing, so.
Wouldn't you agree when you come across the county file, they're going to, uh, reroute it?
Well, we shouldn't be close to the county title, according to your-
That's the north of this minute. I assume that's why it went to the south.
That's correct.
Most sites, it's going to be down here in this corner, and then this is where we should figure county files, so you gotta-
Dave?
I was thinking, yeah, I bet one hour, I'm sorry, I think I'm-
You farm the ground directly south of this.
Yeah, it'd be-
You have a concern about how Los Angeles is placed to the property line?
The, well, that would be my thing about, I have private tile fifty feet away from the bank, so I don't want to get involved in the bill.
Right. Well, because I thought, I mean, Dave's here, and I took a pretty educated guess, he farms directly south of this location, and this is not even you folks in this company, but there's another similar, very similar site to this, and not in this location, it's fine, it met all of the criteria, everything, you know, that matrix has been around forever. Very similar, uh, on the flip side, but this is a site, and it's about this distance, there's a minimum, it's at the bare minimum, and there's forever current issues with the neighbors pushing the snow into their field, uh, that's the biggest thing. Uh, I had to do a little rearranging of the right of way drainage, the driveway culverts, they had, the site had siltation off of it, uh, so I'm just, this is from practical experience, and so not you guys, it's not Summit Farms.
Between Kent and I, and I understand David and Josh Vanler had a conversation as well, and I just gave David my card, so when it comes to, there's a shared field driveway at the boundary line between Dave's farm and Vanworks, we'll have a separate driveway that's specific to our site, that we'll work with the county driveway permit process on, we'll also work with the county for a set that permit, because we'll have a systemic system on this to accommodate the shower and bathroom, and, um, and then anytime in this private area that we're working from Vanworks, both tile agreement with the Vanworks to drain our sites. When it comes to the surface excavation and grading, to ensure there's not an excess amount of surface water going on to Dave's farm, we'll take care of all that, and I look forward to meeting with him on the site.
Well, that's been, that's, it's not, it's a different company, but I can't tell you how many times I have been over there, worked with the landowners. Thankfully, the company has been cooperative, but who the heck knows who's taking care of the site? No one seems to know, not sure the company knows. But anyway, they push the snow in the middle of this field, they've got the drainage and the siltation off of the site, it's perfectly, that's not necessarily legal, but the boundaries, they didn't build it illegally, went through the whole permitting process, but don't create a problem like that, because that's, and it's been unfortunate, and I fully understand, I know the Vanworks personally, and I understand from you guys, come down, talk to them, that they'd like to possibly operate this site, they will not own this site, but operate it, they're very meticulous, they have an issue, you know who's running it. Some of these sites, you don't know who's in charge of them, and you just don't need that.
I respect that a lot. One thing I will share is, I've been with Summit sixteen years, trying to be here long term, McGriffen Farm, Illinois, my family's here. Kent, when I first came to work, he was doing what I'm doing now, in the same role as he is here, and, um, I'm not going to speak for the amount of years Kent has under his belt working in your county matters, but, um, we're still the same folks.
Well, I, uh-
And that's why we put in here, guys, commitments to closure plan, commitments to the incorporating of the north, for some reason, it's not Kent and I representing the site, that site owner is obligated to our commitments that we're in today with the DNR and the plan. So, that's why we go beyond those four hundred and forty points, there's things that, and life goes on, right? And, uh, commitment to the Vanworks as well, so.
Who is Summit Fork?
So Summit Fork is, uh, so, there's a number of entities, and you'll see, when we file a permit with the DNR, we're required to list all of the sites that we're associated with, like, we tend to ten percent ownership, there's a common ten percent ownership interest in any of the entity, so in that permit, um, it goes to that. So, when we first started, it was Summit Farms, LLC, Cole Young, Rivers, Racks, and then as we cornered operations, everybody, there's three different entities, and a plan on ownership, how they own different assets, so no different than family farm, we have different ownership nearest, but when it comes to the permit, and to say we've not had any environmental administrative orders, it goes and looks through all those layers of those entities to the individual level.
And those are zone, you get all of them a hundred percent, or no?
No, that's to my point, where you look back through all the entities to the individuals, so we have interest in all of them personally, um, and that's where we go from there, just be, and that's how the DNR needs to look at it, in order to get that transparency, to get those points.
You can take back this message to him from me, I don't really see the CO2 pipeline described as push upon-
Let's talk about that after the-
I got one question on these buildings. Do they still have that exterior tile on the building that goes to a sump to keep monitor and-
Yeah, yeah, DNR, we're talking about, it's like a home, you have a perimeter drain tile to keep that water pressure away from your foundation. Around the footing of the building, there'll be a perimeter drain tile, adjacent to the each building, there's an eighteen inch inspection port, and we'll have a slice valve in that port, and that water then will either be pumped with the sump pump up to a, to be drained out, or have a slice valve hooked to a field tile. And so the DNR requires that, as well as the right thing to do from a construction technical standpoint, because there's more, there's more risk of water infiltrating a pit, or putting a hundred dollar pressure on than any risk of getting out of the concrete, and so that's why that is engineered into the building. And we're required to document all of that post-construction with DNR, before they'll give us authorization to use. So, DNR is tightened up and added to the requirements, just making sure, not so much that it was down, but to get documented, and see where those tile hook up, and where these sump valves are at, some of those things that get lost over time, in between generations. Great questions.
Yeah. Speaking of the, the, uh, permit, it's one of the things we've talked about every time we go to Des Moines, and listen to the, uh, people down at State House, when we question, um, the master matrix, we, county people feel that it should be updated, it should have some different things put in it, and so far, we're still batting over, uh-
Yeah, but just-
Well, the biggest concern we've run into multiple times, it seems like, gosh, if it's just two miles further away from Odison, it'd make us a lot happier, but, again, farmers, you know, when they bought the site years ago, they didn't plan on putting hog buildings up, and we don't feel like we're in a position to, we can't tell people what to do with their land. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, it has been ever since I've been on the board, helping best for the community, and it sounds like they can do the best they can for people.
As far as I'm concerned, if you got to have a cow in the yard of the barn, this is, this is probably a good site. I don't like it, I have nothing to say. I think it's taking away opportunities from the farmers, just, they move into a community and all the small businesses shut down, that's, that's over and done.
Yeah.
We've got a new reality, we've got to deal with it.
The other side of the point, or, this over here, and I'd go to bat for them, like you said, all that manure is regulated. The new commercial fertilizer bin that we just put over in Odison, or their building, farmer can take that and put pretty much what he wants to put on it, and no one, no one, no one gets that.
Not drag this hour all morning decision, for the time being, believe you me.
Well, I know, but for the time being-
That will be as much, there were more regulations in probably, certainly our lifetimes.
The price is regulated.
But, be that as it may, that isn't, that's a, that's actually a solid point to the manure management of the hog mare.
Same thing.
That is, that is solid. The master matrix, as Boots mentioned, you know, you can get the points, but, and, and all of the things you said, Kent, you didn't make any of that up, I mean, that's valid, and we had a discussion of the other waters, but we'll say this a little earlier in the conversation, were you folks relying on our zoning director, Randy, to make notifications, like to the folks in Odison?
Yeah, so we look out, um, a certain distance, and then the county, if they want to contact beyond that, but I always contact anybody sixteen and a half a mile, in this case, there wasn't anybody sixteen and a half a mile, Randy then reached out, I asked for the lift, I don't think I received, because I contacted, so I could follow up with them, but I understand the closest, he reaches out that, that Walter's own is not inhabited right now, so, you know, there's some, personally, we reached out, he reached out beyond that point.
With all Randy being here, I, I mean, and the question did come up, you know, Odison, that's about a small community, because that's the population center, close to this-
to this.
What I look at is, um, to, to that point, is, is there's a lot of sites that meet the matrix, but we, we don't go back on it, because it may not be, you know, of, but if this site was, was south, uh, west of town versus northwest of town, those distances have any consideration. So when you look at this site, um, you know, close to town northwest of the city limits, um, you know, three quarters of a mile from the closest neighbor, which is south, um, those things is all I considered on, not too, but I had first contacted anybody in a half a mile in the county, and some counties go out for a mile on their notices, but that's the county, and I don't think there's been any other cases here in our conversation, I haven't heard of any other, um, feedback from those.
There's a bunch of them that have, uh, who else they were, uh, three quarters of a mile.
Anybody, my understanding is the letter went out to residents, so it's like a mile to deal, but I think that's wrong, because I wasn't...
Well, I think it would be better for every thing involved in this, that we make sure that, that folks were contacted and do know, and they don't find out, you talked about the permitting process, DNR, yeah, you can't run out there tomorrow and start building something. But, but that's when they find out about it, this is the commentary period, I suspect.
I think that's a good point, and a subject to miss, to maybe recite, but the matrix, master matrix process, and, and, uh, and public notices, and, and the county takes that additional, um, uh, opportunity, I don't mind individually as well. So I truly think we've come to base on this, I think, I'd be answering the site's questions here.
So, go ahead.
Where will the feed trucks come from, for, for, only come from the north or the south?
Yep, I, uh, we work with the county on that, when, once we get a permit, then when we do our driveway permit, I work with the county engineer on where their fast speed route would be preferred, the speed light would come from Altona, so I, I feel it'll come from the north, from the post rooftop, um, but if there's a better road to use, yeah, I work with the county on that.
I'll be sure to play, just kind of push operation, I can't, but...
And I guarantee, every people have a documented feed route, they'll forget it, drive it, and I can go the other way and respond.
Yeah.
So Kent, do you have anything else, or you?
I don't, again, I, the state will probably be on the agenda again next week, and I know Randy wanted to make sure he saw any public comment come back in, you know, that he could relay that, that to you guys, so...
Well, I think we all, just like I said, I mentioned it before, like the insurance, that, that folks have been contacted, notified, you know, not this, the community of Otis, and even if they live in Cassuth County, that's only correct, we are Humboldt, they are Cassuth, but Dave brings up, there's folks in the proximity, and Dave is someone who, I mean, uh, no other son loves, nor Dave loves, it can't be just Dave. We like, you know, we're glad that he's here, but there's, we wanna make sure that the, the public is fully aware of this, and that they don't find out the day that, that excavator shows up at the site.
Well, the site is just north of here, we permitted last year in Cassuth County, uh, with neighbors, a lot of closures, that...
Yeah, oh yeah.
And, and there was, I'm glad Dave's here, but there, there was no, um...
Yeah, you don't wanna assume anything, it's just if everyone knows, and Dave knows, and you don't see him stomping up and down, but we don't want that.
Well, that was all the reason for Van Works, they know for quite a while if this was gonna happen, and this is the first thing I get.
Yeah.
Well, that was what Kevin said Saturday, when I visited with him, was, that was the topic of discussion, shortly after somebody received a notice that, all of a sudden, there's things popping up out of nowhere, and I said, well, we just got it on our agenda.
I'm not believing any...
I know, we understand.
I'm responsible as far as I'm concerned.
No point in doing it, Ken.
Yeah, 'cause I've personally had, uh, neighbor, this is some years ago, but it's a hog site, but again, it's perfectly matrixed, and just like they all are, he went around personally, but he, he had the, all the skin in the game, this wasn't, uh, any company coming in and building it to get the manure. He did his due diligence, and he went around, and I'm like Dave, I said, I'm not favorable, but it's, I understand the manure, blah, 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 that was fine, but I will give this guy credit, some years ago, he, he did his due diligence, 'cause he did, he wanted the neighbors to know, and he wanted to hear, before he even moved forward with the permit. And it, it worked, it, it, you know, got built, but I think Dave brings up some good points too, so I don't know if in a week's time, a few guys talk with Randy, you can relay, or can, you know, that, that was a topic of discussion, everyone is aware. If there's any more public commentary, I want the public to make more to come there.
Well, that's about all we can do, and go from there, so...
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, we'll close it at nine twenty-seven. Kent, I guess we'll have to get...
I have a motion to approve or deny that, around the deadline.
Oh, it does say to approve or dis- disapprove of...
You either gotta approve it or disapprove it, to disapprove it, it goes back to the DNR.
Well, somebody's gotta make that motion, I can't, so...
That's Des Moines again.
So are you... We're gonna wait for Randy.
I'd wonder, I'd, I'd tell you wait until Randy gives us...
I'm hoping that we table the, um, decision until, um, we can get with Randy.
I'll second that. That'd be probably, hopefully next week.
Sounds like we're shooting for next week, 'cause according to Kent's information, they gave us a week from the mild extension.
I talked to the engineer there just, uh, before I came in, and, and she said, um, she would expect a week, we have to, we have... She will expect it to be a lot of super...
So if we get it on the agenda for next month, and we can approve or deny, and then you guys take that from, back to them, and, and we'll have the ability to. So we have a motion, in a second, to table it. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, that is tabled. It's a long way around for an hour.
Good information to share.
Appreciate it.
I don't think I have anything else.
I got that right here.
He's tens of...
Thanks, Kent, we'll just keep your packet.
Yeah, and I, I just apologize, I came with one card, but Randy's got it, I'll leave it here.
Thank you, I want your card, 'cause I, after I hit your truck pulling in, I wanted to make sure we... I just knew it was hardened plate, so I figured it was you.
I...
Thank you.
See you next week.
All right, I appreciate it. All right, with that, I guess Ben?
I cannot guarantee you'll be done by now.
If we, if we work this all together, we got about a minute and a half.
Good morning.
Good morning, sorry about that.
Oh, you're fine. Um, the assignment that I've got on the agenda is to approve and update a county agreement with the city of Humboldt for jurisdiction and control of roads, um, close in north, not with me last week, meet with Alyssa with regards to the, um, expansion of Humboldt and West.
The Johnson property is what they're referring to it as?
With, with the new annexation, they were the prior to the middle of Kentucky Avenue, because our rival road, they're on this northeast of Berkmore Bridge. Currently, we're responsible for a hundred percent of blocking and, and waiving that road, uh, if the city does do the annexation, we continue doing that, we just have to update our agreement, so, we'll do it, and then if there's any major improvements, like them wanting to pave that road, it's a, it's a, it's a...
We currently have an agreement with them on the cemetery road, right?
Yes, so, um, they take care of that.
I have a question for you, Ben. Say, down the road, they decide they wanna pave that, do we have to get wider easements?
I think it was...
Wider easement?
A wider easement on that one, uh, possibly, I'm trying to think of what the, I don't know off the top of my head what the right of is on that stretch of Kentucky Avenue, uh, typically, any of the newer roads to have paved, have at least eight foot right of way.
Yeah, I'm gonna guess that one.
That one probably does not, so...
Why, do you think there's some, uh, possibility of...
Well, I mean, I'm talking probably twenty years ago.
Yeah, I mean, as I just questioned right now, there's...
Sure, but chances are, you'd probably have to, if it was paved.
Yeah, I, I don't look for them to pave this, I mean, the main entrance is intended to be off of Blacktop, off of sixteen.
Is this, uh, basically only Kentucky that we're talking about?
This is the only Kentucky that we're talking about, so if you look at the copy of, of the agreement that I sent you, the only thing that changed is the addition of line item, uh, six B five, where we added East Kentucky Avenue, two hundred and fifteen street or more, the rest of the language is the same, that's, that's previously approved.
It currently isn't two fifty, half city, half ours, too?
Yeah, so right now, uh, the city runs everything on the, on the south side, and against the South Two, and the, and the south side cemetery, and the county is, is the only one that's part of it all.
Berkmore.
We last, uh, we last paved, paved for this in two thousand and two, um, since then, we're just on maintenance.
Their intentions were, were in it, uh, putting an access into the middle of that somewhere, and then they can probably take water and stub it up there somewhere, not knowing how long it's gonna be before they sell anything, that was their intent, they can't afford to do the whole thing, so that was the reason, uh...
And they're looking at developing the south portion first, and then working the right over this.
Yeah, but like, once the work thing is done, you'll have to pave Kentucky probably.
Yeah, just, just if they resolve it, something...
Honestly, if, if that's something that they want in the future, and that they push, if it was me, I'd say that the cost should be on the city.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, the county has the other half, the reason that it's being paved for a half of a mile solely to, you know, per city to city.
'Cause then we'd have some people like, oh, I don't know, come in wondering why we can't pave, we have to grab a road out, yeah, that, that road out that direction, I guess, would probably be a hot topic, so...
P fifty-seven with the south, and it's lighting up, and...
Yeah.
There you go.
Just see if, uh, ten verses were shot.
So, uh, listen, twenty-eighty agreement, that the city doesn't pave the county, and maintaining that stretch of road?
No, uh, basically, we, we need to switch responsibilities on different roads, uh, as far as us blading and maintaining that stretch, we later maintain the radio tower road, uh, the ones that turn to Blacktop, and maintain it, they just...
That's kinda what the twenty-eighty states, it's not really monetary, that it's...
Not of large expense, I mean, waiting that road, it takes an extra couple of minutes.
Congratulations on that road, and it's a county road.
Right, so I mean, it, but that's what it states in the twenty-eighty agreement, but it's not a monetary...
Monetary law, no. Then moves about every second or third...
Right.
...of the stretch.
Right.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the updated twenty-eighty agreement with the city of Humboldt for the jurisdiction of those, along cities corporate limits after successful annexation.
I'll second.
They have a motion in a second to approve this, uh, new language in this twenty-eighty agreement, is there any other discussion?
I'll, I'll, I'll add the, the note when I send this to a list of, of, that says they want to pay...
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate that. All right, anything else? All in favor, aye? Hold the same sign, motion carries.
Mentioned also, they're requiring more right-of-it in the papers that they're expressed.
Our town, the, the, Red Tower, Park Tower, Dairy, that's an eyesore.
It is an eyesore, but that's privately owned.
Yeah.
All right, now Ben has some paid vouchers from last summer.
From last summer's paving, the final vouchers, signed by Matthew, uh, they were arguing over a couple of quantities, um...
You wanna do these separate, or do you wanna do them packaged to you?
All in package deal, if that works.
I think that'd be fine, can you just run through real briefly, is there any noteworthyness? You said something, arguing over quantities, but...
Uh, there was a minimal quantity change on one project, I think it added, uh, twelve hundred dollars to one project, and we had, we had, uh, the slips from the trucks, they were just separate, bottom of the box, um, but as far as the five projects, I think I gave you guys a spreadsheet, a little, uh, between all five projects, the total remaining on the contract is thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eight cents.
Total.
Total.
Everything's completed?
Everything will be completed, though.
That's a recognition.
Of the manure, yes, we're gonna go on to DOT for review and eventual approval.
Did we have the change in, wasn't it last year when we had that oil, what was the deal there, that it cost us more for...
So, the oil and recycled asphalt.
But, but it wasn't that way this year?
Uh, it's, it's a state spec, it's how they run all of the projects, you know.
More of an issue with the state than...
All right.
Your incentive is hidden because you get a lower price from the contract.
Yeah, we have to pay the state because we use that lower price, and that's just that most fascinating thing I've ever heard of.
But you're gonna have to build a road up so high before you start losing shoulders and things narrowing.
So this will go down through what, Ben, down through paid voucher five for L seventy-seven?
Yes.
So with that, I'd look for a motion to approve those five?
I'll make a motion to approve FM seventy-eight at thirty-seven, thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents, FM seventy-nine, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-two, sixty-two, FM eighty, also lost on that one, at thirty-seven, thirteen, ninety-six, L seventy-seven, nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven, and ninety-two cents, L seventy-six, would be two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-six cents, total, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven, and eighty cents.
I'll second Dave's motion for all those numbers.
All right, we have a motion in a second for the said numbers, you want me to go back through?
No, thank you.
Good, with that, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I hold the same sign, motion carries. Oh, I see, good. Okay, looks like we're down to approve somebody to help in the office.
Yes, so with that, uh, I guess I would like to offer, uh, the hiring of office manager, Kimberly Bitsum of Dakota City, um, we had over, over thirty applicants throughout county, uh, we interviewed roughly a third of them, did the second interviews, deemed the background checks on the final three applicants, called references, we called colleges, confirmed graduations, and, uh, a lot of people in the office, and Kim up with it. Kim has the option, she currently works for Bitsum Power in their office... She currently works for Bitsum Power in their office with, uh, Seaville's life. Um, I think she coaches Jaden volleyball for the high school up here. She was a couple of years younger than me. I mean, she was, uh, she went to Fort Hodge for high school and then she's been up here.
Okay, been in the community for a while, huh?
Yes.
And what did they love, did you say?
It was-
I'll make that motion to approve Kimberly Bitsum's office manager for secondary room.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Um, how, how long will she have to work with Sue then before?
About six weeks, a week. Uh, assuming she gives her two week notice today. For start date around the seventh or eighth of March. And Susan, and David, the last, I think that last Friday.
But isn't like, um, Peggy, when she's done, she's still gonna be around? She can come back and say this is a little coaching.
I talked to the city board at that and she said, you know, she's called. If it's an issue, I could, I didn't quit, but like putting in hours on hours.
No, no.
But she, but she's made it clear that she's-
Clearly that she will be there for help. Awesome.
That's good.
We appreciate that. Tell her, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries.
Next item is discussion action on fiscal year twenty twenty three wages for secondary roads. Um, as you are aware, the guys opted out of the union here, a year ago, I think it was a year ago, it was past October. Uh, they got a three percent raise last year. I know that originally I was basing it on comp order recommendations, they said for some jackets, keep it them in line, um, with surrounding counties. Uh, with all the surrounding counties that tend to work with three percent. With any contract to, let's say, this, uh, whatever.
That's a bad example.
But, uh, just trying to keep them even deal with surrounding counties. My proposal fee would be a five percent raise for all of my guys as well as, uh, my office staff.
Well? I'd like to at least run those numbers by Trish to see what she's got plugged in. I don't know if she's plugged anything in in that position or in that part of the budget.
Yeah, I thought you were talking to her. I can't remember the draft copies here a few weeks ago, but those were all, I guess they were all based on a comp order at stations of six. So I made sure that I wrote draft on it. If she didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, I think there's a cap to send in for emergency insurance, right?
Yes. I was trying to-
Covered there.
But it's not supposed to be cap or something?
No, probably won't be, but I mean-
They were saying somewhere between six and eight is what they thought, but I lived the air on it.
Yeah, about. Out of curiosity, speaking of wages, when do we decide what we're doing with Ben? Assuming we're gonna keep him around, so with that, when do we decide on this compensation? You mind, I mean, you are ahead of the story, Rose.
Typically, the chair and the vice chair sit down and discuss it with you, but, uh-
So I've spoken with Bruce and Sandy as far as, uh, my yearly evaluation. I guess we did, we didn't discuss wage.
Okay.
Well, we talked in general, but we didn't have any numbers because numbers were so tight at that point. We went from eighteen to, to, so I just, we left it as right now, we're kind of in limbo. And I guess we haven't openly discussed it, so.
But basically, we, we have to, uh, uh, we'll say this is a project.
This is discussion right now. I mean, uh, I guess I would say talk to Trish when she gets back from being sick and, and-
Put those numbers in and see where it puts us on our budget and see if that works for us. Um, I'll be in time, we talk.
Yeah.
Time during the week sometime and we will visit back and forth, go from there.
So let's get it on the, on the agenda for next week though, so we get this decision out here.
Yeah. And I guess that works for me. All right.
So what happened with the, your guys been doing this matter?
They've, they've been great. I mean, as far as, as far as the, uh, it's been piled for us. So the guys have been, uh, pretty good job. Oil supply, uh, working off of working themselves, that's been broken to work, making these clean jobs. But our rock pile, we've got all of our rock stock piled for the year.
There's any kind of ice or stone roads they're getting the corners and the hills sanded?
We got sand already loaded on the trucks, ready to go.
Yep, some bad, bad-
You're anticipating that? I was hoping it wasn't gonna make it. I'm hoping we get unloaded.
Yeah.
I'd be safe and sound.
Well, that sounds reasonable.
All right, well, I guess, uh, with that, hopefully everything goes good tonight and tomorrow and we'll, I'll be on back next week for our discussion on wages, Ben.
Uh, so just keeping in the back of your mind, we'll, uh, sit down and do a five year plan work session at some point.
Sure.
In, in the upcoming weeks.
Is there a timeframe line on that?
So I have to have it turned into the DOT, the final version by the middle of April. Um, there's not gonna be a whole lot of changes.
We've looked at this.
Five year plan.
That's what we're adding for the fifth year.
Yeah, and, and for the most part, the way the prices have fluctuated so much lately, it's just gonna be spreading then for the remaining four years, about through five.
We haven't really jumped in anything.
Do it away from, you know.
We didn't jump in anything from, say, year three to the first year that something broke or something.
There was a, there was a wood laminate box up on what I call Nowhere Road. Uh, we didn't know the status or the condition of that box over. You guys did a clean out here this summer and the contractor blew it out clean and the box is actually in really good shape. So I did push that from year two or three down to year five. Uh, other bits, we had a couple of paving projects, we were money, um, South of Robbins.
Just out of curiosity, if I got pulled over by the sheriff going to Nowhere Road, would they look at me and say, who am I Nowhere Road is?
It's up to southeast of Little Moren and, uh, this goes, uh, nowhere, both straighties. But it lives on it. It cheats like three miles and it cheats down both ends and nobody lives on it. So a bunch of hogs.
All right.
Yeah, I'll, I'm straight to hog tomorrow and it's head up, turning to go to Bruce's place. You go to the next, go off the road and turn south towards folks hog set up.
Past Pine.
Past Pine, uh, turn to go south a half mile and then back east.
All right.
It's two miles of nothing. It was level B until a hog set up showed up and now I think it's level B for half of it, or it's no snow.
Well, it's on the, on the west end of it. It's a good place to get stuck when you go hunting.
All right. Can I keep it quiet?
Well, I'm... Is it gonna, I'm trying to be patient with your, like, stuff wrapped up before we get to the fight. Like, we need to talk about the end of discussion on it, but there's no big changes.
Like I said, it's basically, uh, a half an hour.
Review it.
This is what I'm proposing.
Cause I will, like, like, a lot of time of March, run through it.
I middle of March would be great.
Yeah, let's...
I don't wanna push it to the end.
Yeah, I would.
I tend to get it started because then it's...
You have to submit it.
I have to get submitted.
About past the fifteenth of March, so we get the number, so it's certified.
Well, we should be happy practically next week.
Yeah. Can you call Tim? About ten fifteen, maybe he's ready to talk to him if he wants to come up. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
And good luck tonight and tomorrow, hopefully we'll, we'll get that burn of that, so nice. Alright, moving down towards the bottom, approved resolution twenty, twenty-two dash six, uh, just first one, are we gonna table that or...
Uh, yeah, I wanna make a motion to table that, because we're all just at the, um, committee meeting, we've all talked about putting this all into the loss revenue. I think we've talked about, you know, different kinds of, that, that maybe moving that money can go into the loss revenue. So, we need, we need to work on.
Just make sure that it's all in the way it's gonna be tracked, so I agree.
Right, and then we're just gonna say that, you know, this money is all gonna get put into the loss revenue, and that the following items are, um, we plan to designate, wasn't that how we met, mentioned that before? To designate for the committee, we all agree that this is the top priorities of the, um, of the money.
More, not really rewarding it, but yeah, cause you bring up, since we're able to take all the money.
Right.
And then say, this is sort of like, uh, instead of a resolution, maybe this is, the guidelines will be following, and the products, projects will be targeted towards, cause you really don't need resolutions then.
I, I, I wanna get with Jamie Cashman to make sure.
Just make sure, I think that's fine, I think you're on the, I think it's...
I, I wanna make sure with Jamie, and I don't know if Trish got a hold of Jamie, she was going, but I don't know if everything else she's...
Yeah, that's a good idea, good one.
I'm just gonna follow up with Jamie, I'll try to give him a call later, this has, you know, later, and try to reach out.
So to get the, the, the protocol, correct?
That's what I just wanna, I wanna make sure.
So, we'll table that resolution till next week. You need a motion on that?
I'll make that motion to table.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second to table that resolution, any other discussion? On the table, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion table.
Question for you, are you gonna include that then, the Midwest?
Uh...
The phone and the building?
The cable.
Cable.
Well, I'm guessing they're probably gonna have to, cause we can't approve that until... As long as we kick that around, I guess.
Um, I got, I had one question, and I haven't gotten an answer on this yet, whether we have to, for the working project, if we have to have, uh, put it off for, uh, bid. I called one guy, he said he saw me, said he saw somebody like that.
Yeah.
Um...
All the other guys?
Well...
What's this person?
This, this little guy had come with a glass ball, and I talked to him this week, I go, how are the prices going? They went up a little bit in price, they said it's a new price, I don't really want this out in public until we, if we do those competitive bids, I don't want his background.
Radio. So, you're asking, we basically have, but we don't have one, but we don't have two.
Well, do you have anybody that you know of that would be offended if they didn't get an opportunity to bid?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to a couple more and...
I don't know if it can get offensive, it's the legality of it.
Well, no, that's for instance, because they'll be the first ones to come in on the following month, which is that we didn't get a chance to bid it, so if...
Well, it's open in the paper asking for, for quotes.
Well, if anybody's interested in, in doing a, uh... Reworking the courthouse, I guess that's what we're...
I, I...
You're just not getting them beaten down the door.
No.
But by the same token, if we don't get him, uh...
On the list, if we don't get it done.
We just tell us that it's gonna be following January that I can come back and look at it.
Yep, we know that, no, I agree with what you're saying.
I'd like to find the ruling whether we have to have a, uh, a big, big...
You're not that answer, uh, I'd like to say...
Is it about a certain dollar amount? Cause I'm not for sure either, I mean, is it a certain dollar amount?
Things have changed recently, because the state competitive bids went up from fifty thousand up to a hundred and thirty-nine, so...
When I talk to Jamie, don't be to ask her that.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, you can use that specific example of what our concern is.
Alright.
Absolutely.
One of these things we're gonna fund with that money.
Right. Trish says here, I spoke to Paul, or Benjamin Paul, he asked that we raise the retainer fee from three thousand three hundred to five thousand, it hasn't been changed since two thousand and nine. Dr. Paul has agreed to see how this works for a year after they, after that, he may sign on longer.
So that for the medical examiner?
Yep.
So with that... Is that an action item?
It says a food medical examiner contract, let me look at that from, like, Trish's, then Trish just read.
So do we have to, is the current, uh, medical examiner, are they, um... Is that the one who's out of town?
Too busy, too busy.
Yeah, so, do we have to break that agreement?
I don't know about it.
Or do we still have that agreement? Dave, do you know?
No idea.
So it's just a base fee, cause then you have every time they have a, the current, current needs, you're charged.
But is this, we understand this correctly, that Benjamin Paul is, he...
He's a doctor.
He's a, he is a medical examiner.
He's a doctor.
He's a doctor.
He's a doctor, and he would agree to be the medical examiner, yeah.
He came in.
So my question is, Rosika is handling it, do we still have a contract with him? I hate to put another one in place until we get, um, and I, was he handling it, uh, we found someone?
We never did really get the answer.
No.
I mean, I could see making a motion, uh, of approval, and that would be, this is Dr. Paul then, Benjamin Paul is a doctor, qualified to be a medical examiner.
Yep.
Um, contingent upon cancellation if needed of the other, uh, medical examiner's contract.
I'm looking at the contract here, and it says that, uh, John Beatty needs to...
John Beatty's on it too.
Sign it, so we can probably get that, um, put it that in John's hands to ask if the other one is, uh, the contract is up on that? Or if we can, what we have to do to take care of...
Yep.
Rosika so that he doesn't have to come from Spirit Lake?
I would think he'd have to cancel this.
Right.
Well, like, I think news brings up, yeah, we're looking at... I don't know if we need a motion on it or not, but I would...
And this, and here says, um, there's a thirty day notice on the city, we probably did the same thing with... I'm sure this is part of the basic same contract that we did with Rosika.
Yep, I just, I think that question being raised is if you need to cancel one before you end reinstating.
You wanna table it?
I would, I would say we don't need to motion on this, but let's get this to the county attorney.
Yep.
He can contact the, I guess, uh, existing medical examiner for termination of the contract before we can start a new one with the new medical examiner.
I'm assuming beans, it's President's Day, he's not here, so...
I think we're gonna need to get that.
If that worked, we, wanna table it?
Table it, well, I would, table it, but, uh, approve it, but I think we need to get the information by next week.
Alright, let's do that.
You have to take a vote on that, this is approved medical, and it's contacted, we need to table it?
I don't think, I think we can prove this, send it to the county attorney to, I don't know.
Well, that's what, that was my original, I mean...
You wanna make a motion, make a motion, and we'll move forward. Quit spinning our wheels on...
Make a motion that we approve the medical examiner contract contingent upon this being sent to the county attorney for cancellation of any existing contracts required to, making sure that this is all legally done.
Yeah.
Alright.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, and I'm not gonna go through that explanation, but, um, pending... The other, all in favor of the set fees at, uh, changing it from thirty, what was that number?
Three thousand three hundred.
Thirty-three hundred to five thousand, and he will run it for a year. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that is no longer tabled. My God, uh, discussion and action on sharing, we are at our year anniversary of the Sanitarium.
Yep.
Um...
Here's what Trish got.
My knowledge, everything, um...
Thompson, discuss about...
He's doing a good job.
She sent an email that, it was due...
She wanted to lift it over, um, who gives us the report, and the board, we need to be sure it gives us the report on it, I've got this last one, let's make here if anybody wants to look at it.
Phone calls have, none.
I think things must have gotten better, cause I haven't had any comments lately either, I think the guy kinda looks a little slow at learning, uh...
Well, he's, he's working with, uh, Casup County, University County, and, uh, Humboldt, Oklahoma, and it's a lot of them for the day. If you want the report, uh, give the phone call, water desk, the town's wells, and et cetera. Total E, EH Regional Meeting in Rockville City, attended Water Infrastructure Grant webinar, um, hosted EH Regional Meeting in Pocahontas on the seventeenth of February. Scheduled contractor meet for the March sixteenth, uh, completed six water tests in January, five on the February fifteenth, devoted to foundation labs on Parakeet. Four on Pocahontas, seven was Humboldt, conducted two loosens reports in Pocahontas. It's getting a grant, Rob guarantees others, first water, seven water, twenty-one to nine thirty at twenty-one, he done fourteen water tests in Humboldt, Pocahontas. Water reconstruction and zero, water plugged, four in Humboldt, three in Pocahontas. Um, second quarter, ten one, for twelve, thirty-one, six water tests in Humboldt, eleven in Pocahontas. Water reconstruction, two in Humboldt, none in Pocahontas, water plugged, eight in Humboldt, four in Pocahontas. He's doing a pretty good job, he gives us a good report.
Well, I guess that's what we asked for, that was what the first...
Do we wanna go about an hour, or do we want us to split salaries in half, that's what they asked before. I think right now we are pretty close to being over half, or right at half, or just over of his wages that they asked before.
I think it's by the hour.
They're doing it by the hour. They're gonna get the money on way to the...
Well, it just says, the Board of Health would like to start discussion about continuing the environmental health twenty-eighty agreement with Humboldt County for twenty-three. I believe that Humboldt County Board meets, uh, uh, Board of Health meets Friday, so I would reach out to both of you and Dave and, uh, ahead of that and ask, uh, things have been, went pretty smoothly the last year, and hopefully we can continue to work.
I don't see, I'm just, uh, trying to whip, I should put it to another year by hours. Basically, it's, it's continuing the twenty-eighty agreement, and it sounds like it's hourly.
Yeah, it's hourly, right.
I think it'd be just, well, to continue it for another year as is, and, I mean, you gave a pretty positive report, no one got any calls lately, so...
So...
I would recommend going ahead with it.
You got your...
Hour, uh, I might call him.
We have a motion to move ahead with the sharing agreement with Pocahontas for the Sanitarium.
Another year.
Another year as an hourly rate like it is set up now.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. And I'm assuming that we'll probably have a little bit of, um, adjustment, or gas, and probably some rates, I, I think.
More than likely.
So, Dave, you wanna report back with that?
Yeah, I've, I've, the fish would get almost a...
It's, uh, information here about this grant money that's available for updating sewer systems.
Yeah, unsuared communities.
She sent that to me, and I forwarded it to you guys.
Yep, we got that.
West Fork Drive, past here, there's some tanks, so aged, therefore a whole brand new septic pump, just for, just for leachy of the septic system. Also, there was, uh, Broadgate, Hardy, Addison, Pioneer, and West River, uh, West River Drive up there, I lose the name here. Um, certainly, the comments for the property to be approved must be booked before July first of eighty-three. It's not transferred ownership after July first of oh nine unless exempt from septic inspection. So, we need to get the word out to Broadgate, Hardy, Addison, and Pot on there, and the people out on West Fork Drive to, uh, that's not on a sewer.
They need those requirements, it looks like they're there on it.
So they can get a whole new sewer system for them.
I'm guessing that that would be the, we would reach out to the Sanitarium, and he would get the crap, steps that they'd have to go through.
Well, I know, but it's community.
They sent this stuff out, it was, they didn't know that they had incorporated.
They're, they're still there, but those West Fork is just a city hub, and it's a house development.
On the north side of the highway.
Well, it's just that, uh, I think the word needs to get out, um... It doesn't really say that they're gonna give you all the money.
No, you might get some...
Because it's a Water Infrastructure Grant that allows, uh, the, these state communities update the private septic system.
I would think it would be, cause it doesn't say, I think anybody in the, in the county might be able to buy for this if you have a little resistance. Needs to be operated, might get some financial aid.
Well, it says it's unsuared communities, so...
I'm guessing if they reach out to the Sanitarium...
Yeah, it says unsuared communities.
Yeah.
But I think almost all our cities do have a separate sewer system, except for maybe Pioneer and Addison. I mean, Addison, Addison, Ruttland, is Ruttland?
Well, Bradgate must not, Addison...
Bradgate does not.
Has the...
Addison does not, apparently Hardy does not.
Hardy does either.
I wasn't on safety. So they may be...
It's worth checking, I remember, it's worth checking with the details from it.
So I'd reach out to the Sanitarium.
Okay. I'll, uh, have a thought with them.
Um, would you have Trish forward that to the city people in those towns mentioned?
That's a good idea.
That way they can have a copy of that.
She's got it, yeah.
Yeah, I emailed it, I emailed it there. Alright, um, have we reached the committee report?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready, I got it ready.
Hit it.
Alright, on the fourteenth, I went to the county bureau meeting at six P M. at the, on the, I think it went, there we go. So, and then on the fifteenth, we had an A R P. committee here at the courthouse, um, with community members, and then also on the fifteenth, um, we had a kitty cat, um, state care meeting. And then I also had that day, and I got the people conference with our executive director, um, and that is all I had for that week.
That's it?
Uh, since I was gone last Monday, I get to go back two weeks, so on the eighth, we had a animal shelter meeting. I was at the shelter, um, I was at the sixteenth, I was at the, uh, Humboldt Community Housing. I was at three o'clock in the afternoon, about six o'clock, we was over to the, um, meeting over at the...
Conservation.
Conservation building, and then Friday, headboard meeting, that's it.
Alright, Monday the fourteenth, I attended the farm bureau supper meeting. On Wednesday the sixteenth, uh, attended the conservation board meeting, had a, uh, workshop after that, had that, and that was my two official meeting actions.
Um, Monday, I, I met with the city council, up in Runway in the evening, uh, discussed a leachy contract with them for the Humboldt County landfill. Uh, we did get a new ten-year agreement, same price as we had before, so, but basically, just gotta get it, uh, all party signed and everything, and then we'll get a file.
That's for the water?
Yeah.
That we have to hold once in a while?
Well, so, hopefully, we don't go through that real quick, or we may not have to do it again. And then on, uh, the fifteenth afternoon, I met with Bruce, with, uh, and Ben, with, uh, taxation firm with the road out here on Kentucky. And then on the sixteenth, I had a Humboldt County Harrison meeting in the afternoon, thirty, and then I went to the dam meeting for the conservation sex. That was a lot of interesting discussion there.
It was.
There were no decisions, just a lot of discussion.
It was pretty well attended also.
Yes, it was.
I was shocked how many people were there.
It was nice, still a discussion, it was, which, um, probably for that.
Alright, Monday night, just an FYI, Rick, we did take care of your, um, seven-layer salad, it, they didn't disappoint.
Yeah, they didn't beat us up after Runway.
They didn't?
No.
Well, alright, we had packed it up, and they were pretty tasty. Um, so I went there, and, uh, Tuesday, I was at the zoning, wrecking in the city. Uh, Wednesday, twelve o'clock, I was on phone call with the ministerial board, um, we're still trying to tweak the food pantry, um, so that was a two-hour meeting. Um, six o'clock, I went to the conservation meeting. Thursday, uh, been on, we're working on interviews for Udlmell for replacing Jamie, so I spent, uh, Thursday afternoon on a interview with one, uh, candidate, and then Friday, we did, uh, another one, so, if I remember right, Wednesday morning, we have fourth one, and Wednesday after lunch, we have fifth one, so we have five candidates, and they're gonna, hopefully, we need knock them down to two or three and make a decision, um, cause my phone can't take many more days of this, so... Um, I guess other than that, that's what I had. Anything else? We have a motion and a second to adjourn, any other discussion?
Well, the point on that would be to make sure everything is followed up on that, because Sandy's pointing on the table and the resolution stuff, the medical examiner.
I think Chris has got that, the medical examiner, we signed it, because that was, the motion wasn't tabled, it was the...
We got it, but we do need some predicate, just to make sure that that's in front of us next week, don't miss anything.
And I think the resolution, as far as the buildings, the process, that's hopefully gonna be done, so...
Well, that's all of that.
And we'll get Rick's, send, can you get your answer for Benton for the rope? And then we'll go from there. Matt, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries, we're out at ten fifteen.
Ken, on them sewer things, there's a phone number here on this paper for, uh, I believe it goes to May over at Pocahontas, uh, seven one two.